Counsel. Um, ask for roll call from the city clerk.
Roll call, Mayor Garrett.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Cantor.
Present.
Councilmember Brock.
Present.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Present.
And Councilmember Stallings.
Present.
Madam Mayor, do you have a quorum?
Thank you, and I invite everyone to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will do the approval of the agenda. Uh, we'll do the consent agenda, so that'll be the approval of minutes from August 20th, 2018, um, for the study session and for the council meeting, and we just got updated minutes from the city council meeting, so...
From August 20th?
Yeah, but that's wrapped up all into the consent agenda, so...
Yep. So moved?
So moved.
Second.
So is this approval of the agenda?
Yeah.
Yes.
So it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That's moved. Next, we'll have the consideration of approval of disbursement reports. First one would be the period covering from August 1st to August 15th, 2018, in the amount of $49,576.07.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Concerns? Thoughts? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That disbursement report is approved. Second one is a period covering from August 16th, 2018, to August 31st, 2018, in the amount of $465,264... wait a minute, $465,264.41.
So moved?
Second.
It's removed and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That disbursement report is approved. Next, we will consider acceptance of the departmental reports.
I want the motion to consider acceptance of the departmental reports.
Second. It's moved and seconded. Uh, is there any questions, concerns, discussions?
I don't have any questions. Just, um, I just noticed, and it just grabbed me because it was a child, that parents just stay aware of watching their children in the cellphone. Um, I guess there was an incident where, um, a young girl was getting direction from a stranger to send obscene pictures. So I just felt necessary to remind us to be aware, to watch our children, our girls with the phones, and the boys, so, sensitive.
Is there, um, thank you, is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That is accepted. This is the time where if anyone in the audience would like to come forth and say anything, but seeing that there is no one here today, we'll just keep moving. Um, there is no public hearing, so we'll get right into our action requests first.
Who read?
Yep.
It's right up there, okay. Please for your read more.
Put over. Um, Southfield Fire Chief.
I'll be darned, it's right.
There it is.
There it is.
Good evening, counsel.
Good evening.
Good evening. Um, I'd like to give you an update on the fire department, what's going on. So currently, we're right on schedule for runs about what we had last year. For our medical runs, we've had 232 this year so far, and 107 fire calls. From last year, we had 351 medicals and 125 fire calls per year. So the fire calls are up this year, and I contributed to three causes right now. People are still using real candles is causing an issue for us to come out, to have fire calls. Also, we have cooking fires. People are, we're still having a lot of cooking fires, people frying foods in the kitchen, and also fireplaces. This is the time now, the year where people start actually getting their fireplaces up and going, and that's also been a cause, a cause now to, for the increase in the calls. So the fire department has a new computer-aided dispatching system this year that we, that we started using. We put computers in all of our fire engines and all of our EMS trucks. We have a new GIS mapping system that actually maps out the calls for us, so that's been a real good improvement. We have an ISO rating of two now. We had a three, now we have a two. Now, this is how they set the insurance rate for all the commercial and the residential. So, I mean, I'm urging every once, and that was, went to effect on May 1st. So I'm urging all the residents, you can call your insurance agencies, and they may give you a break on your insurance, not guaranteed, but that's something that you can do and let them know that you now are an ISO 2 rating. This is another record year for Southfield. Calls are up about 8% for the year right now. We instituted a new software program that all of our systems are now talking to each other, so it's been a great administrative tool for me to budget and replacing, replacing equipment, and actually looking at new equipment. And we've also bought Active Assailant gear for all the firefighters and paramedics, and hopefully we'll never have to use them, but if we need to, we have the equipment now. We're doing a lot of collaboration and training with Chief McGee. We're doing CPR, AED, hazmat training, a little blood-borne pathogen training also. So he's been a great partner in public safety, and we look forward to continuing more training. We did hire 16 new firefighters this year. We're gonna hire another six on October 15th. Like I said, we're gonna be young. We're losing 350 years of experience this year alone, so we do realize we're putting a big emphasis on education and training this year. Mayor Garrett's gonna join us for Fire Ops 101 program, which is gonna give her an opportunity to dawn real fire gear and go into a real fire.
He did not tell me that until today.
We've, uh, it was a little surprising. Hard to get her involved, but it's gonna, I'm looking forward to a really good day. So what happens is, is that us and neighboring chiefs got together, and we invited our elected officials to come out and actually be a part and see what the firefighters are doing, day in and day out, what they experienced, so that I'm looking forward to a great day there. We are doing fire inspections. The area we're working on now is from I-696 to Lincoln, so the businesses will be getting a fire inspection in that area that's happening. We're doing our second hydrant check. We check the hydrants three times a year, so we're currently on our second check. So we will be checking every hydrant in the city. We will not be flowing the hydrants, but we will be checking each hydrant. We don't wanna disrupt the system right now, but we will be looking for hydrants that need to be repaired. We did purchase one new ladder truck. It's gonna be, it's gonna take about a year to build, 345 days, and we did get four new engines also, so we're looking forward to those also next year. So just a reminder, I will be coming out with a preventive fire tips later this year. Just remember, the candles, don't walk away or leave the house with candles lit, if you must use candles. I mean, now you can switch to a lot of the candles, the candles that aren't real candles, you know, you can, you can use those. The cooking fires were still seen in the house, and make sure that you clean your, the ductwork and stuff for your fireplace. We also urge you, we've had three significantly large fires this year, and what's been a lot of help to us is just the involvement of the neighbors. I urge you to get to know your neighbors, know, know if they're home or not home, how many kids, dogs. That's been a real good help to us in an emergency. That's been really good for us. We urge you to have a working smoke detector, a working carbon dioxide detector. Remember, 10 years is the lifespan of a smoke detector. You know, I don't know if I could do it for every residence, but if you call, if you call 248-796-5601, you can talk to our secretary, Tammy, and if you need someone to come out and help you with the smoke detector, we're able to send an investigator out and maybe, and be able to help you with that. And October month is cancer month. You will see all the firefighters, we're in pink this year, so I just want everyone to know that we're here to serve you. I think we have a good plan in place. Our response time is down. Unfortunately, calls are up, but we're here for you, you know, in the time of need.
Can you speak directly to the cellphone charging scenario, and also anything electronic such as laptops and all that?
Right. Well, I think the first thing with any of that is in moderation. You gotta remember not to charge, charge any equipment, any electronic equipment, like on your bed, on your couch, you know, it needs to be on a, on a service like your kitchen counter. What's happened is individuals walk away, and for whatever reason, it may, it may cause a fire. And same thing in your car. If you're, if you're having your charger plugged up, even though your phone's not in it, and some of the older cars, it's still drawing current, so it's still, still getting hot. So a lot of the young adults in our, in our community, they're charging their phones and sleeping with the phone under their pillow to wake them up, and so with their alarms. That's a bad thing. Put it on the nightstand. Do not charge your phone or computer on your bed. It's a very, it's a new thing that we're seeing, and it's, and it can be, it can be deadly, and that's, once again, one of the reasons why you definitely need a working smoke detector.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
Is the plan, once you finish with the fire inspections on the south side of I-696, move to the north?
Yes, yes, I mean, it's gonna take time. I currently, I currently have three inspectors right now, but we, I will be putting six in that, in that division.
Can you talk about the hydrants? The hydrants? You mentioned that you're not, okay, so you're not, oh, the building, so you're not gonna do the flow? You do the flow once a year or something?
We don't flow the hydrants. We don't flow them.
You don't ever flow them?
We don't flow them. Well, we have in the past, we have flowed them. Now, I make sure that we, we do make sure that we have a, an accurate flow in the city, but as far as flowing every hydrant, no. We don't, we don't flow them, you know, so I look, we look for leaks. If the ones that are, if we find something that's leaking, then we open it and make sure it's working properly and reporting it.
So you don't have to flow it to make sure there's water coming?
No, we don't, we don't, no, we, there's a frost line in there, and so we actually can check to make sure the water's below the frost line for the winter is what we check. Now, if the water's above that, or we, obviously, or if it's obvious signs of that it's leaking, then we can repair that.
Can any youngster contact you regarding a career as far as, you know, what it's gonna take to become a person like you?
Oh, yes, oh, yes, definitely. We are still hiring. Like I said, this year, we're gonna, we're gonna replace over 20% this, this year, but yes, we are still hiring. They can definitely contact us, and that number, you know, you can, you can look at the City of Southfield's website, or you can call 248-796-5650.
Great, thank you.
Shouldn't you be on our website?
Yes, I should.
I think, okay.
Okay, it's in the works. I just wanted to put it out there.
Okay.
Wow, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for the information. Really appreciate it.
Okay, so, doing that for my sister who's not here, so this'll be for her. Okay, so, the next thing that we're gonna be doing is a proclamation for, or claiming South, why do I keep saying Southfield?
It's the chief.
The lady.
I think that, and technically, the way that you...
That's what I see when I look at it.
The way that you're supposed to do it as an alphabetical, Lathir should come first, I'm just saying. That's how I was brought up, but anyway, I'm sorry. I have no idea why I keep saying it. So, this is, the next action request is to proclaim September as the National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, and I think this is our second.
Yeah.
This is only our second annual till we're doing this, and so it was something that I requested to do this only because of something near and dear to my heart, because many of you all know, four years ago, I lost my nephew to suicide, and it's something that people need to be aware of, the fact that it, suicide has no color, it has no socioeconomic background, no age limit, it affects everyone. And actually, last year, we had the suicide awareness vigil, and a lot of people came out. It was very interesting to find out all of the people that are even in our own community that have, that are survivors of suicide, they're survivors of suicide attempts, and the one thing that I can say that I have been, come very conscious about when it comes to suicide, is that we have to be careful with each other. You don't know what people are going through, you don't know what is sustaining them every day, and it's just, you know, it's more than just being kind, it's also being gentle with people. You never know if you are the person that can save a life, or if you are a person that can cause someone to take someone over the edge. So that is my goal, as long as I have life in my breath, to always make people aware of suicide awareness. And it just so happened is also the month that I did lose my nephew, so it's a bittersweet month for me, period. So, and I'm pleased, and I'm very happy that my colleagues have agreed to have a resolution for Lathir, I almost said Southfield, but I did not, for Lathir, to have the resolution for the Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. And seeing that it is a very short resolution, I will read it. And it's, whereas September is National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, and where is, oops, this is falling down, whereas each year, more than 44,965 individuals die by suicide, and where is, more than 90% of children who die by suicide have a mental health condition, and where is, public awareness of this tragic problem, education and treatment are the key to preventing further suffering and loss of life. And now, therefore, be it resolved, that Mayor Michael Garrett and the Lathir Village City Council do hereby proclaim September is Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in the city of Lathir Village, Michigan, and all of us have signed it. So now, if anyone would like to make a motion?
I make a motion to proclaim that September is the National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I just wanna give kudos again to our police department. There was a suicidal interruption in the police report even this month again, so you're right, it's in our community, you know, you just can't assume that it's, it's, you know, curtailed to one, one group of people or whatever, so, kudos to, good job.
Is there any other discussion? So it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion, I shouldn't say motion, but the resolution has carried, thank you. Next on our agenda is a proclamation of September as the National Recovery Month, and I will hand that over to Cheryl.
Okay.
I think they contacted you?
Yes, we were contacted by the Oakland County Health Network relative to support for the National Recovery Month, and they asked that we join in adopting a resolution in that regard. Would you like me to read it?
That'll be fine.
Okay. And it reads, whereas September 2018 is National Recovery Month, whereas one in five teens abuse prescription drugs before the age of 13, and whereas preventing and overcoming substance use disorders is essential to achieving healthy lifestyles, both physically and emotionally. And whereas September 21, 2018, has been designated for Oakland County's 11th Annual Substance Use Recovery Celebration and Walk, now therefore be it resolved, that on behalf of Mayor Garrett and the Lathir Village Council, we are extending our sincere appreciation for the dedicated and devoted services being performed by Oakland County Health Network to increase awareness of substance use and the need for services, and is signed by Mayor Garrett and all members of city council.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to make September National Recovery Month in Lathir Village. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Just proclaim that September is also National Recovery Month. And next, we have a consideration of approval for IT Right Service Contract.
Mayor and council, you have before you a service contract proposal from IT Right, which is our service provider for the repair and maintenance of computers, equipment, and computer networks. And presently, they provide those services for administrative office, and the police department was asking to have those services extended to cover their computers and networks as well. They also provide remote backup of the systems. So the combined services is an amount of $8,835, and that reflects a savings of $465. So that's before you, for your consideration for the one-year contract. You can get out of the contract with 30 days' notice.
Thank you. Who would like to make the motion?
I would move approving the IT Right Service Contract in the amount of $8,835.
Second.
It's removed and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The contract has been approved. Next, we have consideration of approval for the Prosper Magazine Ad.
Mayor and council, you have before you consideration of taking out the ad in the Prosper Magazine, which is a collaboration between our Ho-U-R magazine and the county of Oakland to help promote the whole region, and this is an opportunity to have a community highlight within that magazine publication. You did the same thing last year, and it seemed to receive a positive response, so they are asking for you to, again, take out the section to highlight the wonderful things in Lathir Village, and the amount is $1,750.
Thank you. Do I have a motion for it? So moved?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ad is approved. Next, action item F. Consideration of Approval of the First Reading of an Ordinance to Amend Chapter 54 of Solid Waste, Amending Article II: Collection and Disposal.
All right.
Go ahead.
Madam Mayor, this was brought to the city's attention from the code officer, as well as from numerous complaints from residents about trash and animals, critters getting into bagged trash that's either left out specifically with respect to the commercial district, left out prior to collection, before their dumpsters are emptied, or before Trash Day, and then some of the residents, you know, putting their trash in bags, it has created an environment issue. So this ordinance is, the ordinance amendment is in response to that. Presently, the ordinance require, allows for trash to be placed directly on the curb in a plastic bag. This amendment is going to require that all residents and commercial businesses place their trash inside of a trash can prior to pickup, as well as the non-residential, the commercial properties will have to have their trash stored in an enclosed either can or dumpster at all times, not just on Trash Day. So this, there are two types of cans that are going to be allowed. The first is your standard 35-gallon trash can that you can pick up at Home Depot. The other, that Trangali sanitation will allow for is a 96, a really large 96-wheeled can, a 96-gallon wheeled can that has a mechanism on the front that their trucks can just pick up and dump. So there is a weight limit on the 35-gallon cans of 60 pounds. If they're heavier than that, they won't pick them up. There is no weight limit on the wheeled cans, because again, it's a mechanical device that picks them up.
Who would like to make a motion?
So moved?
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? I do have a question. Do we have an idea of how much those cans are?
The 96-gallon ones?
Yeah.
I know from personal experience, mine costs about $100 to purchase the large can from my trash provider.
Okay. But Home Depot is, you can also get the...
I think, I don't know what a standard trash can costs.
Standard trash can. I understand the ones that they can actually put, use, Trangali can use their trucks and pick it up with. You can't, I'm not sure if you can use the cans from Home Depot to have it picked up like that. You know what I'm saying? The way that I recycle them, they just...
Yeah, the 96-gallon ones, my understanding is that Trangali will only pick them up if they're Trangali cans.
Right, that's my point.
Okay.
I don't know specifically how much they cost, but my trash provider has a very similar 96-gallon can where I live, and it cost me $100 for the can, so...
We're talking residents, right, right now? Okay, so, I mean, the cans that I have right now, they're not the fancy ones that they can lift up, but I can still use what I have at Home Depot, right?
In fact, everyone will have to, at the very minimum, pick up a Home Depot can like yours to put their trash out. Can the, can the businesses use a 96-gallon one if they want, or no? The businesses can, yes. Yeah, okay, I thought you, the way you said that, it made me think you couldn't.
And that this is something that we are not looking to do until, or go into effect until 2019, January 2019?
Correct. Typically, an ordinance requires a first and a second reading, so tonight is the first reading. Depending on the outcome of the motion, it will be scheduled for a second reading at the next regular council meeting, and we can, council has indicated that they're gonna like, affect, request an effective date of January 1st, 2019, so that'll give residents and businesses time to go out, pick up a trash can from Home Depot, or keep plugging Home Depot. You can go to Lowe's, you can go to Ace's, you can go to any local store.
Thank you.
Walmart, wherever you want, or, or purchase the can from Trangali's. And there'll be information about acquiring those cans, I'm sure, on our website.
On our website, and we were talking about sending...
Or they can go to Menards also.
Or Menards, yeah.
Menards, just making sure we...
Cover them all.
Cover them all, no one gets in trouble, thank you.
Or Ace's.
Ace's. I was gonna say the same thing.
And we will make sure to, we talked about earlier, that the citizens will have good information and time enough to...
Yes, we'll make every effort, from the point of adoption to the effective date in January, to notify residents.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The reading was approved. Next, action request G. We are just voting on this, or is this approval? This is voting.
It's voting.
Okay, so this is the official ballot for the Michigan Municipal League Liability and Property Pool 2019 Pool Director Election. And the two people, I'm gonna have to read over your shoulder, the two people to be considered is Robert Clark, Mayor, City of Monroe, Paula Zalinko, I hear someone else.
Yeah, that's right.
Mayor, City of Burton. Who would like to make the motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
It says there's an option to write in the name of one or more candidates, but...
Would you like to write your name?
No.
Anybody else?
I'd read the whole thing, but it's okay.
No. Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Then they have our... Then they have our vote. We'll know at some other point whether or not they won. I'm sure they will. Okay. That's all our action requests. City Administrator?
Thank you. We received some inquiries relative to the property on Lincoln Street that had the fire. And I've been advised by the building official that they have obtained the demolition permit as well as the utility clearances, so they should be starting the process of the demolition any day. Following that is our understanding that they plan to reconstruct the, the building, the house. Also, I shared with you a draft of the communication that will be going out to all of the residents relative to the utility service line warranty program that will allow them to obtain a warranty for the water and sewer lines if they so choose. It's an optional program. It'll be available to all residents. And the Food Truck Friday has, the season has ended. We did end it a little bit early. There wasn't a large participation as the, the weather became cooler. So we'll look at how we might try to reinvigorate that next year, or if we need to be doing something differently to have options available for local residents. The Farmer's Market, the last one, is this Wednesday, and there is a beautiful basket of many of the fruits, vegetables, and baked goods, and a T-shirt, and I don't know what else. There'll be a basket raffled. You have to be present to win, but the tickets are free, and they're available at the, the front desk in City Hall. So we invite everyone to come by, get their raffle ticket, and the drawing, I believe, is five o'clock on Wednesday. Again, Monday, October eighth, is a joint meeting with the Southfield School Board that will be at the Mint and Michigan First Conference Center. I've had a conversation with Oakland University relative to getting some students on board to do an internship program, so we're hoping to be able to move that forward. In regards to the staff offices, if you recall, we have two positions vacant presently, so I'm finalizing those job descriptions, so we can get those posted hopefully within the next two weeks. And if you stop by the office, you may not find who you expect to find in the spaces, because we've moved people around. But so, right now, Recreation Molly is downstairs, and Erin has been moved to where Ken was located. So, we've shifted some people around to get some, especially synergy as we're trying to share responsibilities while these two positions are vacant. The Shred Day was a great success, and I don't know if Councilmember Stallings wants to speak to that, but it was a very large turnout, and people were very receptive to that service being available. The Sixty-Fifth Birthday was a huge success, and again, we want to thank the Michigan First Credit Union for being our keynote sponsor and donating ten thousand dollars towards that event. And we still have T-shirts and the commemorative pins available. You can, for five dollars, you can get both.
They're each five dollars, or you can get two for five?
One, one five-dollar bill will get you a T-shirt and a pin.
That's not bad.
The MML Conference was this past week. They had a lot of great information and, and that was supportive of local communities and council members. Cantor and Ferguson were also in attendance, so I'm sure you're gonna have lots of ideas that you want me to be working on.
Yes. Yeah, we do.
But it's always, it's always a great opportunity to talk with other communities on what they're doing and how they're implementing, and just get, just generate some new ideas and energy. So, it was a fun and informative time there. And I think that concludes my report.
Thank you. City Attorney?
Nothing for me tonight.
Oh, wow. Okay. Reports from boards, commissions, committees?
Planning Commission, we had a meeting last month where the potential gas station in the existing Verizon Building, south of six ninety-six, was discussed for a second or third time, I believe. Third time, I believe.
This was their first official, they had a conceptual review in front of the Planning Commission, and then one in front of the council.
Yeah, and it was, it was a very, very good meeting. There were a lot of residents in attendance. There was cooperation on both sides. I thought it was great, because both sides listened to what the other side had to say, and it was a very productive meeting. As an outcome of that meeting, the Planning Commission has required a traffic study to assess how traffic on Southfield Road will be affected by putting in a service station at that location. We also requested a onsite traffic flow and analysis, well, not necessarily an analysis, but proof of the ability for the tankers to be able to successfully navigate on the property the way it's currently designed, as well as proof that the supplier will be using the smaller tanker trucks to fill the tanks at the, at the station. There were a variety of concerns that were brought up by the, by the residents, and the, you know, variety of concerns first brought up by the Planning Commission, including placement of bollards, hours, the fact that Coral Gables will need to be widened to support the traffic and the trucks.
Portion of Coral Gables.
Port, yeah, yeah. Thank you. Yeah, portion, a very small portion of Coral Gables, where butts Southfield Road will, will need to be widened. And then, ensuring that a, the rim light around the canopy doesn't face the, the residents. The residents also shared a variety of concerns, including not having any speakers or TVs in the tanks other than those that are required by law, in the pumps, other than those that are required by law. The cleanup schedule of, of the lot, which the owner suggested a two-day, twice-a-day cleanup by his crew. And then there was also discussion in terms of what happens if the business should fail with respect to the underground tanks. And the applicant indicated that it's a state law that the tanks have to be either removed or filled with concrete within one year of the, of the closing of, of the station. So, so we're, we're just waiting for the follow-up information from the, from the applicant, and I believe that will be discussed at the next meeting. And there is no meeting tomorrow. The applicant didn't give us anything, so there's, there's nothing on the agenda, so the meeting was canceled. Is that anything?
Thank you. Councilman Ferguson, did you have anything?
No.
Councilwoman?
I do. Just to piggyback off the Shred Truck Day, it was a wonderful, successful event. It started, this was our third annual, and you're starting to hear stories like some woman, some, one of the residents whose mom passed eleven years. The shred truck allowed her to get rid of things. You'd basically, you'd really be surprised at the stories that were starting to come out over the shred trucks. So I really want to thank AARP, and we had nine thousand pounds of shredded paper. That's a lot. So, a lot of work, but it, it was worth it. Also, there is, I didn't mention last time that I was elected as the precinct delegate to kind of help encourage registering to vote, just getting out to vote. So, I won't be knocking on everyone's door, but just, just trying to help fulfill my role there to encourage everyone to please register, which I'm sure our city clerk is about to talk about. So, don't be surprised if you see me knocking on your door, but that's it.
You're at the precinct delegate now?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, congratulations.
Yeah, the shred thing was great. I just wish you would have done it one day later, because I cleaned out my basement on Saturday night. I had five contractor bags full of, full of shred. I had to take it up to Socrum and do it piece by piece. I guess I didn't need my Michigan Bell receipt bill from nineteen eighty-nine, so I didn't need it anymore.
Yeah, see, it's weird, the stories that's coming out. Good for you.
So next time, do it one day later.
Five years, five.
Anyone else want to bring up any new business? Man, clerk.
Yes, thank you for this opportunity. I have several announcements concerning Election Day. Election Day is November sixth, and the polls open at seven AM to eight PM. But I want to start with, tomorrow, we'll be celebrating the National Voter Registration Day. And that's to try to energize people to come out and be sure that you register and vote before the October ninth deadline. So if you have any reason that you think you may not be here or able to register by the deadline, come out tomorrow. I'm gonna have a display table in the lobby, maybe a few little sweet treats here or there, but I will have voter registration applications. I will have a sample ballot for you, and I'll be there to answer any questions you may have about the upcoming election. So please stop by. The office hours are from eight AM to four thirty. I mentioned the voter registration day. Now, the last day that you can register to vote for the November sixth election is October ninth. So you can do so by stopping by the office, you can go on the city's website. There's an application there to register to vote. You can stop by any Secretary of State's office and register to vote. And also, you can go to the, the state's website. So there are several different, different options for you to, to choose from. And again, if you have any questions, I'm always here, you can give me a call. Wanted to remind you about the ballot. I want to show you. The ballot is on the website. This is the size of it. This is front, and this is the back. So, I'm just going to suggest that you stop by the office, go to the website, and get a copy of this. Take it to, with you to the polls, and you go in and vote. You can use it as a reference when you go and vote on Election Day. Or, you can stop by and ask for an absent voter application, or give me a call, and I'll send you an absent voter application. On this ballot, just to remind everyone, there's no longer a section to vote straight party. So you will have to go through each and every race on the ballot and choose and make your choices. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. I just strongly suggest that you get a head start, so you can do your research on the candidates. Just do background, and all the information you need is, is on the website. And again, I do have the ballot on the website, a sample ballot. So I'll have some sample ballots available for you. You'll have to stop by tomorrow as well. So, Saturday, November third, I'll be in the office from nine AM until two PM. That's nine AM until two PM, that's a Saturday. That's the last day that I can mail out an absent voter ballot to you. The very, very, very last day that you can receive an absent voter ballot is the day before the election. Stop by the office anytime from eight AM until four PM. If you wait until the day before the election, you have to vote your ballot in the office. You can't take it home with you. So I wanted to give you that information. I made some notes here, and I think I covered everything. The number in the office here, you can reach me at two four eight five five seven two six zero zero, extension two two six. Thank you.
You're welcome. Then also, for tomorrow, the League of Women Voters is having a candidates forum tomorrow at seven in Farmington Hills. Unfortunately, I just realized I forgot where in Farmington Hills, but if you look up League... It's on, yeah, it's the League of Women Voters, it's on their website. And then Wednesday, the Southfield Lathrop Dems Democratic Club is going to have a meet the candidates and a endorsement meeting in Southfield. So you can also, and this is gonna be for the forty-sixth district judicial candidates are non-partisans, so that will be at seven o'clock. Any other new business? Hearing none. I will take a motion for German. So moved.
Second.
Mayor adjourned.
Thank you.